Testing. Okay, I'd like to call to order the May 11th CTC meeting. First order of business is the approval of the February 10th CTC meeting minutes. I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion approved by Councilman Prince, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Thank you. Any discussion? All is approved. Motion approved six zero to one. I say it's six zero to one?
He can't understand.
All right, Daniel, if you want to come up and clear your stuff.
The uncommitted on the regular balance as of the end of April is approximately $1,400,000. And then there's P-17 uncommitted balance in that's non-recurring funds and that's approximately[122.12][122.12]$88,000. And that'll be reserved for DOT runs.
Thank you. The first one up is Abbeville County Public Works is to request $150,000 for Abbeville County's roads and bridges, Department for Material to be used in the county road system, stone, asphalt, calcium chloride, culvert pipe, bridge construction material, signage, et cetera. How does Council act on this?
Ma'am? Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve this?
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Councilman Prince. Any discussion? All is approved. Motion passed at six zero. Next order of business is South Carolina DOT to present for approval a prioritized list of secondary roads needing improvements. This project will be funded using a 25% annual allotment recurring, reoccurring funds that is $614,000 and the remaining balance of the non-recurring, which is $187,725.61. How does Council act on this? Yes, come up with a job.
Good evening. I think this year's, of course, state roads go, we need to spend approximately $100,000 doing some underruns on some previous contracts. I have submitted your approval on this of seven roads totaling $794,000. Majority of these roads are in areas where we've previously done some resurfacing either by CTC funds or by state secondary resurfacing. And for financial limitation of time, we're unable to get some of these roads. So we have some neighborhoods in some areas where we only have one road left to do. So the majority of these roads are roads that are going back to picking those up to try to complete those areas. So I've submitted this of seven roads totaling $794,238 consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm going to move to that meeting. That's it. Mr. Jones, you pulled up of, uh, of, um, some roads that are listed here now.
Okay, give me a second.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, motion made by Councilman Goodwin, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Any discussion? All is approved. Motion passed at six zero. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Give a second. Um, I'll... Okay, all in favor. Motion passed at six zero. I'd like to begin the May 11th, 2020, Abbeville County Council meeting. First order of business is public hearing. Ordinance number one, 2020-05, to make appropriations for Abbeville County operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of Abbeville County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2020; to provide for the levy of taxes for Abbeville County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021; to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds; to provide for other county purposes; to authorize the county to borrow money in anticipation of taxes; to provide for the repayment of sums borrowed by the county governing body; and to provide for certain fiscal and other matters relating to county government. Has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Next is ordinance 2020-06, to amend the Abbeville County official zoning map for the parcel of land identified by tax map number 009-00-00-116 from a zoning district of general residential to one of general commercial. Has anyone signed up to speak on this? Thank you. Next is ordinance 2020-07, to invoke the provisions of Section 12-43-217B of the South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976, as amended to provide the reassessment of all property in Abbeville County, South Carolina, subject to an ad valorem property tax, be postponed for one property tax year. Anything?
No matter, Jerry.
Thank you. Okay. Next is ordinance 2020-08, to add Brenda Road to the county maintenance list and other matters related thereto.
No matter, Jerry.
Thank you. I would like to order the May 11th, 2020, county council, Abbeville County Council meeting. First will have the invocation by Councilman Simpson.
First of all, I would like to ask that we pause for a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Jim Irwin, who attended just about every one of our meetings. So if we would, please take a moment. Dear much gracious heaven and father, thank you for allowing us together tonight in person. Thank you for watching over us, leading us, and guiding us, and protecting us throughout this pandemic, and we pray that you will continue to do so. Please go with us as we leave here tonight and keep protecting us from this great pandemic that's going on all over the world. Please lead, God, and direct us tonight in the decisions that we will make. And I ask that you be with the family of Mr. Irwin as they suffer the loss of their loved one. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Let's look into the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, the notice of meetings and agendas have been posted, furnished to news media, in persons requesting notification. At this electronic meeting, county council is present in council chambers to provide At this electronic meeting, county council is present in council chambers to provide public access. This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and Facebook websites. Next order of business are the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of April 13, 2020. Are there any additions or changes to these minutes? Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve this meeting on April 13.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Councilman Prince. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes six to zero. Next is the Budget Workshop of April 27, 2020. Are there any additions or changes to these minutes? Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve it as written.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Prince, seconded by Councilman Barnes. Oh, sorry, Councilman Simpson, sorry. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Next is unfinished business. We have the third reading of Ordinance 2020-03 to amend the Abbeville County Ordinance Number 2019-11 to provide for the inclusion of the property identified therein and located in Abbeville County in a joint county industrial and business park with Lawrence County rather than Anderson County and other related matters. How does council act on this ordinance?
I'm sure we've got to approve twenty, twenty, August 20, twenty, dash, three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Goodwin, seconded by Councilman Prince. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Motion approved six, zero. Next is the second reading of Ordinance 2020-05 to make appropriations for Abbeville County operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of Abbeville County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020; to provide for the levy of taxes for Abbeville County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021; to provide for the expenditure of tax revenue and other county funds; to provide for the county, for other county purposes; to authorize the county to borrow money in anticipation of taxes; to provide for the repayment of sums borrowed by the county governing body; and to provide for certain fiscal and other matters relating to county government. How does council act on this ordinance?
Would we approve the ordinance?
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Prince, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Motion approved six, zero. Next is the second reading of Ordinance 2020-06 to amend the Abbeville County official zoning map for the parcel of land identified by Tax Map Number 009-00-00-116 from a zoning district of general residential to one of general commercial. How does council act on this ordinance?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Ordinance 2020-06.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Councilman Simpson. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Next are the second reading of Ordinance 2020-07 to evoke the provisions of Section 12-43-217B of the South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976 as amended to provide that reassessment of all property in Abbeville County, South Carolina, subject to an Ad Valorem property tax be postponed for one property tax year. How does council act on this ordinance?
Motion, we approve the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion by Councilman Prince, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Do we have any discussion? All those approve? Motion passes six, zero. Next, we have the second reading of Ordinance 2020-08 to add Brenda Rowe to the county maintenance list and other matters related thereto. How does council act on this ordinance?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Ordinance 2020-08.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Councilman Simpson. Do we have any discussion?
Um, is the last information we got, I'm assuming there's been no further developments that we...
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Sorry, I didn't look your way. Motion passes five, one. Anyone opposed? Motion passes five, one. Next, we have the first readings. All first readings are read into the record by the chairman, and a vote is not necessary per Ordinance 05-11. Ordinance 2020-05 to make appropriations for Abbeville County operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of Abbeville County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020; to provide for the levy of taxes for Abbeville County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021; to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds; to provide for other county purposes; to authorize the county to borrow money in anticipation of taxes; to provide for the repayment of sums...
That's the budget ordinance. You're reading the wrong one.
That's the one, is it?
Probably the updated. Should be this. Those two. You can just use that.
Skip the first number, is that right?
No, it missed it altogether. Yeah, using that.
Okay. Ordinance 2020-09 to amend the Abbeville County official zoning map for one parcel of land located on Legion Lake Road, honey path, South Carolina, identified by Tax Number 006-00-00-119 from a zoning district of basic industrial to one of forest agriculture. Next is an emergency ordinance to extend the declaration of a state of emergency for Abbeville County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto.
You do have to have the vote on that one.
Okay.
The ordinance?
Yes.
It's emergency ordinance.
All right. How does council act on this ordinance?
Motion, we approve the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Prince, seconded by Councilman Goodwin. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Next, we have Resolutions versus Resolution 2020-09 authorizing the county director to extend the existing fiscal year 2019-2020 contract with hair and trucking for the hauling of stolen products to be used by the Abbeville County Department of Public Works. How does council act on this resolution?
Motion, we approve the resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion made by Councilman Prince, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Do we have any discussion?
At what point will we remit that? I know last year it said that we were not. And then potential to look at it this year. I just wondered at what point would we look at it?
I'll put it back out for bid whenever council would like. I think as long as the price is extended, it's a good idea to continue. This is a 2018 price. It was a good price and it's a real good price now, so...
Okay. How many other could you... Let us know how many other, all those and companies you consulted before extending, before proposing the extension?
Two homers and two quarries. So four private parties.
That would have increased had we gone out to bid, is that correct?
The core is for definite.
Okay.
Any other discussion? How does council act on this? That was very good, that one. All those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Next is Resolution 2020-10 authorizing the county director to extend the contractual relationship with Smith Gardner of Columbia, South Carolina, for engineering and environmental services at the Abbeville County Landfills through June 30, 2021. How does council act?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2020-10.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Councilman Simpson. Do we have any discussion?
Dan, was there any change from this year, from last year to this year on this?
No, sir. Smith Gardner has been our firm since we left Joyce, the past, so this is the fourth year, and they have yet to have any increase.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six, zero. Next, we'll have the county director's report by Kent David Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a way, an update with COVID-19, on April the 27th, which is actually the last day of our budget workshop, we brought all employees back to work in the building. So they are working their normal hours, however, we still remain close to the public, conducting all of our business over the phone, through the mail. It's been done with mostly relative ease, a few problems with the length of taxes, which is that time of year, but we continue to work through that. And in the remainder of this week and beginning of next week, we will have a discussion about what day we will be reopening to the public. We anticipate that being before the end of May, definitely before the beginning of June, but we'd like to be back open to the public before the end of May, if at all possible. So we'll have that discussion with our pandemic response committee and make that decision this week, and I'll communicate that to you, and then we will let that be made known to the public through press releases, just like we've communicated all of our updates. But with that, the budget has been completed, so the budget as it was passed tonight is the same budget that was presented at the workshop. No changes have been made, and there will not be any changes made unless we're told to for the third reading, so it stands as passed. But with that, we will, in consultation with the county attorney, will likely have a second public hearing at the June meeting, if it's open to the public, for the sole purpose of avoiding any potential conflict with state law. We're kind of treading in new territory, being close to the public, our public meetings close to the public in this way. So just to ensure that we cross all of our Ts and dot our Is, that's the discussion that we've had. And then finally, just an update on some of the capital purchases that were made earlier this year. The sheriff's office vehicles, all of their vehicles have been received and placed in service, so you'll see some of those trucks around the county. They were very good, very happy with the way that those turned out, and they're in service, as well as the self-contained breeding apparatuses that were purchased as well. Those have been received and are in service. So with that, that's all I have to report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have our committee reports. First is the Finance Committee chaired by myself. There's, I have no report at this time. Next, we have the Personnel and Administration Committee chaired by Chairman Campbell.
Chair, I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Next is Public Works. Chair Badgers, Councilman Simpson.
I'd like to report that all of our landfill convenience centers are back open and operate under normal hours this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I may ask, have we seen a... How did it work out? Did it work out pretty good as far as the amount of traffic? I know that's what we were concerned about a little bit.
The traffic and the volume has peaked, and we have seen a slight decline. Normal operation hours, we don't have to do any weekend pickups, and they're making it, at the peak, we were having to go out on Saturday and Sunday, and now we're just having to pick up on Sunday. So if that pattern continues, hoping the next couple of weekends we'll actually make it through a whole weekend without having to go out.
Okay. Next, we have Intergovernmental Relations chaired by Councilman Prince.
No reports at this time.
Okay. Next, we have Planning and Industrial Development chaired by Councilman Goodwin.
No report.
Thank you. Next, we have Education, Recreation, Health, and Welfare chaired by Councilman Campbell.
No report.
Thank you. All right. Next is Public Safety is chaired by Councilman Barnes. Mr. Crowe, do you know anything for that?
No matter.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have the council members' report or comments. Does anyone have any comments or reports from your district?
For you. I went to Jared Produce Down Street, bought something. There's a young man waited on me. That guy was so courteous and polite. You don't see that anymore. And we're back the next day, same type of person down there, you know, just, you know, just something was shocking to me, with somebody waiting on you, the friendly, courteous, and polite at the same time. You did a good job.
Okay.
And I've seen a lot of that. I've seen a lot of that during this whole sickness, I mean, outbreak. Seems like people have been a little bit more patient, especially since they're opening things up now. I think it didn't peak, so it's good to see people be nice to their neighbor, basically.
Okay. Next is Public Comments. Do we have any... There are no public comments. So next is Executive Session. Do we have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Motion to go to Executive Session.
Second.
We're going into Executive Session for Economic Development, Project Russell, and a contractual issue with OS1.
QS1.
QS1. I said the O. QS1.
Operating system. I'll make the motion, we go into Executive Session.
Thank you. Okay. Motion by Councilman Prince, seconded by Councilman Simpson. All in favor? Okay.
None is in executive.
We are now in Executive Session.
And I would have come, was weird as whenever. Yeah, I saw what I knew it was, and then you go back and you're sitting in some serious roles in some old movies you've been in.
Any of y'all watch that Michael Jordan thing?
Oh, great. It's great.
It is awesome.
It was great.
It's good.
Okay. We're now out of Executive Session. We have one item that needs to be brought to the public.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to purchase QS1 payroll software at an initial cost of eighty, $8,347.50.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Prince, seconded by Councilman Barnes. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven, zero. Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Prince, seconded by Councilman Barnes. We are now adjourned. Ain't nobody gonna do...